Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission, Glendale Planning Commission. Today's date is February 3rd, 2016. We have a roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners Astorian, Landrigan, here. Manukian.
Here.
Chairperson Lee.
Here. And we have a report regarding posting of the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, January 27th, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? And we'll have Commissioner Manukian lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the approval of minutes.
I move approval of the minutes.
Okay. We don't need any second for that, right?
We have a second.
Second.
Okay. It's been approved. Okay, next, do we have oral communications? I see none. So let's move on to, we do not have any zoning appeals. And we'll write onto item number seven, Planning Commission items. For the new business, okay, let me open the public hearing. And we'll get the staff report.
Okay, Chairman Lee, Planning Commissioners. The first item on tonight's agenda is a tentative tract map for the property located at 2700 Piedmont Avenue. The applicant is requesting approval by the Planning Commission to subdivide a five-unit multifamily residential project with four of the five units currently under construction into five new residential condominium units. The site is an irregularly shaped 10,390 square foot lot located in the R-1650 medium-high-density residential zone. It's also located in the medium-high-density residential land use designation. Surrounding uses on three sides, to the north, to the west, and to the south are all zoned R-1650, same medium-high-density residential. And the properties to the east are zoned R-3050, moderate-density residential. The project site is wrapped on two sides by Piedmont Avenue. The development consists, and as I mentioned, of a new four-unit, three-story multifamily building above a subterranean parking garage in addition to maintaining the existing storybook style single-family residence to the south of the lot. Behind Chairman Lee, I have the plans put up for the proposal, or actually, bless you, for the four-unit project under construction. And there are also photographs at the very top that show the construction site as well as the existing storybook house that is being maintained. The project site also includes the maintenance of two oak trees. And one oak tree, however, was removed as part of the proposal. And this was reviewed and approved by the urban forester. The proposed building is a podium-style development similar to recent multifamily residential projects. In this case, they are, however, townhouse-style units. The new residential component consists of a one-two-bedroom unit, two stories, and three three-bedroom units ranging from approximately 1,900 square feet to 2,100 square feet. Each unit also has its own private open space in addition to having a larger common outdoor deck between the two buildings and the interior property line to the west. The proposal was approved by the Design Review Board Number Two on November 29th, 2012. There was also a setback variance that was approved back in June of 20, June 24th, 2010. And this was to allow the construction of the four-unit multifamily residential development with reduced setbacks along Piedmont Avenue just on the east. And again, because Piedmont ramps on both sides of, I should say, on two sides of the property, they would have had to provide the front setback for both sides in this case. And they were granted a variance to reduce it on the east side. In addition to, aside, that is, from the approval of the variance, the project complies with all other zoning standards, which include open space, parking, landscaping, lot coverage, floor-to-air ratio. There are 12 parking spaces provided for the four-unit project. And this would be in the semi-subterranean garage that's, again, under construction. And the single-family residence, as I mentioned, was approved for the maintenance and the preservation that is to be repaired under the Urban Design Studio Approved Historic Preservation Plan. The project is going to be obviously served by the existing public and private utilities. It complies, again, as mentioned, with all the R-12, R-1650 zoning requirements with the exception of the approved reduced setback. The staff report went into great deal, the project's compliance with the various elements of the general plan. And the five-unit residential project is consistent with the city's intent of promoting infill residential development in a medium-high-density residential zone. This particular tentative tract map is exempt from CEQA review based on a Class III new construction and conversion of small structures, an exemption. Staff recommends approval of the tentative tract map in addition to the 20, with, that is, with the 27 attached conditions of approval. That concludes staff's brief presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. But, oh, I would like to make note that we received an email correspondence just this morning with regards to a letter from Mr. Grant Michaels, who lives in the adjacent condominium complex. And he wanted to voice his objections with regards to the mass and scale of the new project, particularly the third story. And he was a speaker at both the variance and at the previous Design Review Board meetings. So this has been consistently relayed to the discretionary hearing body at each step of the process. With that said, again, that concludes it. We have no other further correspondence.
Any questions for the staff? No, I did notice that the letter that we saw this afternoon here, you know, it does talk about the mass scale of the project, but that's not something that we're discussing here in this hearing.
No, at this point in time, the Planning Commission is just charged with the subdivision request to convert what is currently now under construction in an apartment building to convert it to a condominium project.
Thank you.
So the mass and scale was actually dealt with at the Design Review Board stage.
That's correct. Okay, we have Mr. Heck, Mathias Astorian. Did I butcher your name?
Yes, close. Mr. Chair, Member of Commissions, good afternoon. My name is Haik Mordirosian. My address is 1545 North Verdugo Road, Number Two, Glendale. I'm tract engineer. This project is very unique in construction right now due to preservation of the existing single-family that considered as a historical building. The building, the site is almost close to 10,000 square feet, and it's wrapped around this Piedmont Avenue with the new four units, which is under construction, with 12 parking spaces for tenants. And single-family itself has its own parking spaces. And due to requirements of the historical preservation, we have to rehab the existing building to the point that we are allowed to do, that we will do it. Beside the preservation of the two existing oak trees that are on site, we are going to preserve the rock walls, which is wrapping around the Piedmont Avenue, and we will preserve those too. And other than that, the units ranges between 1373 to 2,100 square feet with two- and three-story building. These buildings were all heard and approved by Design Review Board during the process. And based on the condition that staff has indicated on their report, we agree with those conditions, and we fully comply with those conditions. If Commissioners has any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So if we do not have any questions or any other speakers on this matter, and no other comments from the staff, we'll close the public hearing and go to deliberation.
Oh, I will move approval of, let me find the report here so I can read it. Sorry. Yeah, there it is, it's at the top of the page. That upon consideration of tentative tract map number 73764, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 73764 is hereby approved, subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapter 16, 16, 16.16 and 16.24 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 25 additional conditions listed below. And the Planning Commission hereby makes each and all of the following facts, findings of facts that are included.
Yeah. Just for clarification, there appears to be a typo in the motion. There are actually 27 conditions, as shown on the motion, and not 25.
26.
Actually, there's a number.
One that follows on the next page.
Correct. One follows on the next page, so a total of 27, so.
I amend my motion to the 27 additional conditions listed.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion by Planning Commissioner Landrigan and a second by Planning Commissioner Manukian. In terms of a roll call, Planning Commissioner Manukian?
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Landrigan?
Aye.
Chairman Lee?
Aye.
The motion passes 3-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the, the item, agenda is 518 through 520 East Windsor Road. And this is under the tentative tract number 73856, our case here. So we have a report, please, from the staff?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The case before you is tentative tract number 73856, located 518 through 520 East Windsor Road. The proposal is to subdivide a proposed multifamily residential development for condominium purposes consisting of 34 units. The large-sized drawings for the tract map and various architectural drawings have been posted behind Commissioners Manukian and Landrigan. The zoning designation for the properties are 1650, which is medium-high-density residential. And the general plan designation is medium-high-density residential land use as well. The characteristics of the lot is, it has a 145 linear feet of frontage along East Windsor Road, and has a depth of approximately 179 feet. And the lot is approximately 0.6 of an acre. It's rectangular in shape, and it has a relatively flat topography. The surrounding uses are developed with the single-family and multifamily dwellings. The zoning designations for all the properties is, are 1650 with exception to the properties of the north, which is R-20250. Currently, the project is under review under Building Plan Check. Currently, on the site, there exist two single-family residences and a five-unit apartment building that will be demolished as part of this project. The Craftsman-style home on the property was reviewed in 2014, which, under this Craftsman survey, which it was determined to have a 6L, which is ineligible for local listing or designation. As it was discovered, there was extensive modifications made throughout the years on that Craftsman home. The entitlement history for this project, it had an administrative exception, which allowed a lot coverage of 8% above the 50%, which is allowed by code. It had a Design Review Board approval in June 25th of 2015 for, once again, this is a 34-unit multifamily residential development with semi-subterranean parking. This also has a density housing plan application that was approved in June of 2015 as well. It includes nine moderate-income affordable housing. The composition for the unit mix is, can be found on A22 on that sheet, so if you're wondering which units are designated for moderate income. There were three incentives or concessions for this density bonus housing plan. It was for height to allow additional 11 feet 8 inches, an additional story where three is permitted, and it would extend up to four. And it would not allow, it would not, it would not include the additional open space when it's required for, when they do increase the density for having a lot over 90 feet. The SEQA determination for this project is exempt under Class III-2 for infill development. As specified in the staff report, the project proposal is consistent with the general plan, and the site is suitable, suitable for this type of development. Before staff concludes with, with the presentation, earlier today, staff received testimony in the form of a phone call and an email was received from a single person. Her name was Jennifer Barrios. The summary of her concerns was, was related to the overdevelopment of the area, existing parking issues that exist in the neighborhoods, and the demolition of the Craftsman home on the site. Her email was printed out and been placed before each Commissioner. Also, just before I conclude, there is a condition that we would like to change. It's number five in Public Works. When they just, their condition reads to be on Pennsylvania Avenue. Obviously, this is East Windsor, so we would like to change it from Pennsylvania Avenue to read as East Windsor. We would like to correct Public Works Department's condition, and it's number five. And in conclusion, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve tentative tract map 7385. And if there's any questions, I'm available for you.
Any questions for the staff?
Yeah, I have one question. So density bonuses cannot intrude on the required open space, though, correct? They have to allow, what the, the open spaces required without any bonuses still has to be maintained?
Can you repeat that question one more time? I'm sorry.
All right. So open space that's required for multifamilies is set by how many units there are, correct?
The, yes, that's correct. What they, the concession they received was for the additional open space. They do have, they do provide open space. If it, if it didn't, for lots, not greater than 90 feet, but because the lot is 145 linear feet frontage, it did require additional open space. But they requested as part of the density bonus plan as one of the concessions. I hope that made sense.
So we gave away the open space because they gave us a density bonus, but they got to build more. Doesn't sound like really good horse training here.
You don't need to.
Am I right?
I think there may have been a misstatement of what.
Members of the Planning Commission, legally, the city must grant certain number of incentives and concessions under the government code. So if the developer asks for it, we are required to, despite the fact, even if we don't want to. So that is a state law, that's a mandate, if they, if they provide a certain percentage of affordable units.
Thank you for that explanation.
So the, the open space was given up in return for affordable units?
Correct.
Go ahead.
Correct.
So the density bonus is actually not tied into that per se?
The additional density is, is also mandated, but there's additional, a certain number of incentives or concessions that are also mandated depending on how much affordability is provided to the city.
Okay. So this whole mandated thing is in response to the affordable units?
Correct.
Provision of affordable units in the complex?
Yes.
So it sounds like they got density bonus and the open space concession.
Okay. So what you are calling density bonus, they are seeing as provision of affordable units, which by, by definition will bring up the density.
All right. Any more questions for the staff? I do not see any speaker cards, so we'll close the public hearing and go into deliberation. I'm open to a motion.
There's no applicant?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a staff report. No applicant in here? Oh, then, if you're here, can you state your name and fill out the card afterwards?
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, staff. My name is Andre Aguardian. I'm the civil engineer for the subject project. And I have here the owner, Mr. Balian, and Mr. Gavro Minasi, and the architect, if you have any questions.
No. You have to fill out the card.
We'll do.
Okay.
We have a resident who would like to speak, Mr. Chair. Would it be okay if they filled out the card now?
Yeah, you could come up, yeah, you can, you can go in. But you need to fill out the card, sir. State your name. You can do that afterwards. You can come up and speak on the podium. Yes.
Good evening, Board. I'm a resident of Windsor.
Your name, please.
My name is George Talibera. I'm a resident on Windsor. And my mother is not here, but she's going to be coming in shortly. That might be her. But we both have concerns over the mass of the building. We read through the plans. Apparently, three concessions were made. I think zoning only permits or allows for like 36-foot height in the area. And their, the project is almost 50 feet high in a somewhat residential, high-density area. There's still single-family residences, two, three-story apartments, and now they're coming in with a four-story building, again, almost 50 feet high. And zoning only allows for 36. The other concession is per zoning, I think the maximum allowed units permitted are only 19. I think it's 14, but then for some reason, they make an exception, and it's like 19 that are permitted. They're bumping it up to 34, okay? Which far exceeds even the low housing maximum, which is 35% bonus. They're coming in with like almost 80% bonus. So per state regulation, the maximum for low housing bonus is like 35%. And for some reason, they're coming in with 80%. And I don't see that to be justified in any way. I read through the report. There's no justification for exceeding even the state limits of the bonus permitted for additional units. So that's a major concern. You know, I, you know, we're okay with progress and all. I would think at most, you know, if they were to allow 35% increase in the units, that would be fine, but not 80%. And then, of course, there's a concession made for, as they mentioned, open space. I think required per code for zoning is like 2,000 feet. They're coming in at 1,000. So they're overbuilding, in my opinion, on this, it's half an acre lot practically, which isn't very large. They're cramming all these units in. It's obviously going to impact the community. There's a school no more than a block away. Traffic's going to be, I'm sure, a mess during the development of this project. And parking situation's already pretty bad on Windsor. Parking is only on one side of the street. So if you add in 34 units, some of the units are going to be three bedrooms. You know, there's usually four or five people that live in, and, you know, there's two, three cars usually associated with each of those. You know, I'm speculating here, but I would imagine that the number of spaces permitted, the cars, or the people living in there are going to exceed the number or the capacity of the spaces provided. So those are our concerns. Again, and then also the scale of the project. If you were to look at the pictures, it pretty much resembles the apartments that are built in downtown Glendale off of Central or Broadway. You know, you drive around, it, you know, they resemble that, all white face with some orange decals. You know, this is still a residential neighborhood. It, in my opinion, the building looks fairly commercial. And it looks, it resembles quite a bit of the apartments right off of Brand, which are fairly large in scale. And this one is pretty comparable, in my opinion. Again, 50, 50-foot height building in a residential neighborhood is, I think, you know, pretty out there. I know there's certain exceptions that need to be provided for low housing and this, you know, I'm okay with certain things, but, you know, it still has to be within the scope. And I think any exceptions need to be, you know, someone needs to consider that, exceptions need to be made, perhaps in downtown Glendale, but not, you know, maybe not as much in the residential neighborhoods, because it's still fairly residential. You could drive around, and you won't see any size structure that large. I think there's one with 23 units or what have you in close proximity, but nothing in comparison to this one building. And it just doesn't seem fair that just one builder is allowed all these exceptions when the rest of the neighborhood isn't granted a variance in their zoning. So I would say, if you're going to build this, change zoning first for the entire neighborhood. Give everyone the opportunity to, to take advantage of this and not just one person.
Thank you. Please fill out the card. Question for the Speaker?
Not for the Speaker.
Okay. So, thank you. Please, fill out the card. I'm going to address a question to the staff.
Do you have any clarification for what was articulated, particularly the 35% versus 80%?
Yes.
Let's start with that, and then we'll work our way down.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Manukian. The state mandates a minimum of 35%. So the city has to give a 35% density bonus above the allowable maximum number of units. However, the state does not limit the city on the amount of density it can give. It can give a discretionary density bonus if it feels that it's getting more affordability. Here, the city is getting 47% affordability, well above the minimum of, and there's a chart that talks about it. I think that the minimum is 40%. So that, in any way, regardless of what, how the numbers worked out, the city exercised, it's right under the government code, to grant a discretionary density bonus in this case because of the amount of affordable housing that was provided. So that decision was already made by the Director of Community Development.
Second question regarding the massing of the building. Now, I understand that this is not where we discuss or have discretion over design and its various aspects, massing and the height of the building being a couple of those. But the 50-foot, what is the actual height of this structure? Do we know?
The plans, I believe it's 47 feet 8 inches.
Okay.
That's what's proposing. The height permitted by code would be 36 feet because they asked for one of the concessions or incentives. They were allowed an additional 11 feet 8 inches.
Which would, in any event, be necessitated by the higher density of the structure?
That's correct.
Okay. And in approving this? And in approving this project, what effects are we anticipating in regards to parking and traffic?
The code, once again, it allows an incentive, which is separate from the ones they're requesting, it automatically has a separate section for parking. As they're providing here, it does meet the parking ratio that they're requesting, it does meet what the parking requirements are by the density bonus chapter. And they're providing 59 parking spaces, I believe, let me just clarify with the plans. Is that correct?
And what would they be required to if they did not have bonus density?
I would have to recalculate that, but I just checked to make sure that they meet, by the unit mix, I would have to redo that for you, I can calculate that for you if you'd just give me some time. But they do meet the parking ratios required by the density bonus chapter at 59 parking spaces.
When the Design Review Board looked at this, did they look at neighborhood context? I think that's a valid concern of the individual who came up, who said that there is no other.
I was at the Design Review Board hearing, there was a recognition that this is a larger building than any of the surrounding buildings. Under Section 1818, SB 1818, our hands are tied. So we worked with the designer and the owner to try to massage the building to disguise that, as well as you can disguise an extra story on a building. We think they came up with some good solutions, but there's no question it is a tall building, and we know it's not exactly fitting the exact neighborhood context.
And one other question. We do have an affordable housing goal, and we're quite under it. So how does this bring us closer to this? Does this meet a percentage of our existing need for affordable housing?
This project absolutely would bring us closer to meeting our regional housing need under our housing element. The more, we no longer have enough public funds to build them using public money, not that we ever did, but now we're further behind than ever. And so when we have private developers coming forward, we do encourage that affordability. We have a huge need in Glendale, particularly for larger units for families. And so this project does provide several larger units, as was noted earlier. Thank you.
Any more questions? I do have one question regarding the density bonus. You said, you know, 35 percent is state mandated, but it's up to, if they meet or more than meet the requirement, you know, it's up to the directors of discretionary to allow more density bonuses. Is that set density bonus, or is it fluid? You know, when you say up to, you know, director to do that, what is the range?
Members of the Planning Commission, there is no maximum, there's no cap by the state, so all the ordinance, or the statute, rather, which was previously referred to as SB 1818, is found in the government code, there is no set maximum, so it's up to the city to determine, of course, subject to SEQA and subject to if certain findings can be made by the city, then we could deny, but in this case, the findings, we could not make those findings. So the, to answer your question, the state, I think, has wisely left it up to the city to determine what, how much density that they're willing to give, depending on how much affordability and the type of affordable project here. I think a factor was that they were ownership, and they were moderate-income units.
Right. And, you know, I'm all for the moderate income and affordable housing, because as Commissioner Landrigan mentioned, we're short of that, so we're all for that. Now, so I guess, to put it simply, there is no limit, and actually, you know, this density bonus is the one that caused this height increase and, you know, the massing of the project. If director wanted to give more to bring in this housing project, he could have done that and became even larger, a more massive project.
Correct. Again, subject to SEQA and subject to other laws, we would be limited, but three is the, to be clear, the density bonus, the amount of extra units, is discretionary, however, the incentives and concessions are mandated at three at this level of affordability.
Interesting.
May I ask one more question? I know that there's, I don't know which Senate bill it is, and maybe it's what you were speaking about, but the new changes in SEQA with the density bonus, so is this the new law that was passed that is being applied here, or is it, so this was decided before this year's SEQA changes too? Okay.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to say something. I think it's admirable that we want to increase affordability, and I think this project has tried to do that, but I do think that unlimited cap on density bonus is something that we would have the ability to write into our general code and maybe put a cap on without violating state code. Am I correct?
Absolutely. We could put that into our code, and we could also just have an informal policy that we are not going to exceed a certain density, or we could leave it up, the way it is now, it's on a case-by-case basis.
It might be an interesting subject for us to discuss.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Not relating to this item, but because this brought up a question, I think, is neighborhood context and the appropriateness of an unlimited density bonus affecting the neighborhood context.
I agree with Commissioner Landrigan. I think, you know, our staff kind of needs to address this. I did, you know, all the cases that we reviewed, we did not see this much of a bonus density that, you know, was of a concern, and we just learned that there was unlimited, you know, that was left up to the discretionary decision of the director. So I think for the consistency purposes, I think we need to visit this and to see what is, you know, consistent throughout the project. I do not want to handcuff the Planning Department or the director, but I think this is something that we need to look into. And by the way, welcome, Mr. Joe, back to Planning Department.
Thank you.
Any more questions? So I don't see any more card, so I'll be closing the public hearing. And we're going to deliberation. Any discussions?
Mr. Lee?
Discussions?
I believe the applicant is entitled to a rebuttal, because we did hear some concerns with it.
Oh, okay. So reopen the public hearing. Applicant have rebuttal to the speaker.
I don't think the applicant was, the owner wants to.
Mike Ballion, and good evening, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. I've been developing Pasadena for the last 25 years, 30, 40 projects, high-end, exclusive for the residents of Pasadena. In the early 1980s, I was to develop in Glendale. Few little projects here and there, also of quality. I came to realize that people need to live in a decent condition, in a good condo, with the quality of life. That's what we do. But we have left the affordable people behind. We have left our infill properties behind. Windsor is a neglected street. Have you been there? It's absolutely neglected. You walk in the street, you feel like a third-world country. A lot of Armenians, Mexicans, ethnic minorities walk, and they're deprived of what Glendale is giving to the central downtown Glendale in form of luxury, in form of boxes, so forth and so on. Someone has to think about the people that live in Glendale, they're leaving Glendale, they're walking away. We know why? It's not affordable anymore. It's too expensive. Four bucks a foot rental on Central, four bucks a foot, 700,000 a condo for two-bedroom. Who can afford it? Guess what's happening? A lot of people are coming from the west side, east side, and Glendale residents are leaving Glendale. I'm going to sit down and watch this all day long? So we have to build some affordable units. This project has nine moderate-level units. To put in context, moderate level means a family of three or four, that makes 65,000 or less. That's 95 percent of population, 95 percent of our citizens. What's wrong with putting a family of a teacher or truck driver in a condo that's as decent as 800,000 condo, but make it affordable for 200,000 bucks? That is the price that these condos are going to sell for. Nine units, 200,000 plus or minus, for families of three or four or two people with kids. This is a great thing. We should encourage this in Glendale, like Pasadena. This project does not make economic sense to me, let me tell you. I regret that I did it, but it's too late now. The numbers are not adding up, but I'm going to build it. I have no choice. I invested too much money, but I'm going to help nine families, Armenian, Mexican, Korean, local, American, white, black, red, yellow, I don't care, of the Glendale residents. They deserve the quality of life. We are leaving them behind, and it's time to make a turn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments? Declaration? Then I'm ready to take the motion.
Okay. No, I know, I was asking if you're going to be all right with it. All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that, upon consideration of tentative tract map number 78, no, 73856, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to set tentative tract, that tentative tract number 73856 is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to State CEQA Guidelines Section 15332 and 15194, and hereby approve subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act Chapters 16.16 and 16.24 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 67 additional conditions listed below, and that we hereby make each and all of the following findings of fact as listed in the staff-prepared motion.
With the corrections on number five?
Yes.
Oh, yes. The Pennsylvania changed that to Windsor. Do I have support?
I have a second.
Okay. Motion and a second?
Planning Commissioners Landrigan?
Aye.
Manukian?
Aye.
Chairperson Lee?
Aye. For number 320, this tract map passes. Okay, next item on the agenda is creating a historic, historical district on the Neodjara Drive. So that, we have, sorry, Gadi.
Mr. Gadi's right up here now.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ms. Gadi.
Getting in place here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm going to make a presentation to you. The proposed Neodjara Drive Historic District is in the Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood and would be our seventh historic district. The red outline indicates, at the bottom of the page, the red outline indicates where we are in the designation process. We are at the second to the last step. Thank you. The blue boxes indicate the steps that involve public input, so at this point, we have had the opportunity for a lot of public input and community outreach. The boundary of the proposed district encompasses 32 properties in the Verdugo Woodlands neighborhood that closely follow Neodjara Drive. The Historic Resource Survey is the backbone of the historic district designation process. It has two components, narrative history to place today's district in a historical context, and a property-by-property survey that helps identify which properties and landscape features contribute to the area's historic character. From the narrative, we find that the original subdivision of Neodjara Drive was called Verdugo Canyon Track, and from the start, an emphasis was put on the natural character of the site with its trees and streams, but also its close proximity to the city. Vintage photos of two houses that are still standing today show features characteristic of the district, such as rubblestone and the stream. Another vintage photo shows stone and landscape features. Unfortunately, the stream is now dry. Many of these features still exist, and while many are hidden from view, the historic district overlay zone would protect them.
Okay, yeah, sure, lights down.
Last week, they told us to turn the lights back on when we turned them off, so there's no pleasing.
Another feature we recognized early on are the trees. They play a critical role in the overall character. Due to its early riparian nature, the district is full of native oak and sycamores that exist on public and private property. The neighborhood also has a great collection of houses built between the early 1910s and 1960s, reflecting styles of those decades. The Prairie Four Square, Tudor Revival, Spanish Colonial Revival, French Eclectic, American Colonial Revival, Minimal Traditional, Ranch, and Modern, including the home designed by Rudolf Schindler, built in 1941, which is on the Glendale Register. The Historic Resource Survey assesses the district against the nine criteria for designation established in the Historic District Ordinance, which requires that one criterion be met. Neodjara Drive meets four of the nine criterion, Criterion A, Criterion E, Criterion G, and Criterion H. The survey also determines the district's period of significance. Looking at the range of dates and the number of homes built during each period of time, you can see Neodjara Drive developed over the course of many decades, but was largely built out by the 1960s. By assessing these dates against the historic research, the consultant determined the period of significance is 1909 to 1962. The consultant also surveys each property individually and creates a survey form with a list of the property's architectural features and makes a determination as to whether the property is a contributor or a non-contributor. We define a contributor as a property built during a period of significance, and it retains the integrity of its original defining features. 25 out of the 32 properties were found to be contributors, and seven were non-contributors. The ordinance requires 60 percent of the properties be contributors, and Neodjara has 78 percent. We are here today toward the end of this process. A petition is circulated among property owners requesting that council designate the district 24 properties out of the 32 requested district designation, or 75 percent, and there was no notice of opposition filed. The ordinance requires The ordinance requires fifty percent. We conclude that all ordinance requirements have been met. The Historic Preservation Commission and the Planning Commission make advisory recommendations to the City Council, and the Historic Preservation Commission recommended designation two weeks ago, and so it is now the Planning Commission's turn to make a recommendation. Thank you. You should also have received three letters supporting the recommendation, the designation.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Of staff?
Of the staff?
No.
I do.
Okay.
Uh, the period of significant, that significant time period, could we go back to that? Yeah.
Are you questioning nineteen oh nine?
To sixty-two. Now, that seems like awfully long time. What is the standard for that?
Want me to take the question?
You can jump in.
There's no set standard for that. It really depends on the developmental history of the neighborhood. We hire professional preservation consultants to prepare the Historic Resource Survey. We work with them in our review of their determination, and generally, you look for the largest grouping of properties, and if you have a large gap, an eight- or nine-year gap, you might say, a house built after that gap may not qualify as a contributor or be part of the period of significance. So it's really a case-by-case situation. So in this case, the professional judgment of the consultant brought it up to nineteen sixty-two. All of our historic, almost all of our historic districts have a decade range generally spanning four to five decades. This one takes us into the early sixties, which I think is the first time we got into the sixties. Part of the issue here is the way Neodjara Drive is said, and hopefully you guys have driven on it. It's so much about the trees and the landscape and the feel and then the stream. The houses, of course, aren't secondary. They're very important to the district, but the grouping tells a story also that this beautiful area was strangely slow to develop, and that helps the later properties kind of help tell the story of how the district was built out over the years.
Any more questions? I just have one question. Out of curiosity, you know, when we designate a historic district, it, you know, for the future developers, any people, property owners wanting to do some major renovation, you know, there's a lot of limitation on what you can do on that type of, you know, protected area. I, you know, of the thirty-two houses, twenty-five are contributing, seven are not. So my question is that of those seven that wants to do a remodeling or want to do a major renovation, you know, are they, because they are non-contributors, are they allowed to do that, you know, to have the major renovation without restrictions or?
Well, so stepping, I'm sorry.
Yeah. If they, let's say, wanted to build, you know, towards one of those similar homes that were contributing, is that encouraged?
Just stepping back, all properties in historic districts have potential for future expansion, future renovation. Being in a historic district doesn't affect anything on the interior of the property, and in Glendale's historic districts, we really only look at the historic features of the property that are visible from the street. So for example, if someone wanted to make a significant addition at the rear of a house that was completely invisible from the street and still met all of our zoning codes, FAR and everything else, that could be done. Contributors.
Yes.
Lights.
Lights.
Turn the lights. Okay, thank you.
You condemn them. Non-contributors also have guidelines for their future development that are built into the historic district guidelines. They're definitely more lenient because we're not looking at character-defining features, the historic aspects of the property, but we're also not expecting them to change radically over time at the front or the portions that we can see from the street, but there is more flexibility on those properties. And they could also be more, they could easily be demolished because they're non-contributors, and something else could be built there that might even fit the district in a better way in the future.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
So with that, we have speakers on this agenda item. Like to call up Catherine Yarca.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman Lee. My name is Catherine Yarca, and I'm the initial applicant for the historic district. I have a little speech prepared, but like I did at the HPC, it's probably not necessary to go into it, except to say that the proposed district, Fernbrook Place, Neodjara Drive, Hillside, Wabaso, is just an extraordinary neighborhood with the historic landscaping features and the significance of the old Neodjara stream to Glendale's development. It really is, I can't think of any other neighborhood quite like it, not just in Glendale, but really in Southern California, and I've heard that echoed from people who know Southern California even better than I do. I ask for your support in helping to create the district. It has widespread support in the community, and it's also just, it helps us feel like a neighborhood, and people, you know, we get together and have parties, and that is a function of us getting together and trying to create the district. I did want to answer your question about nineteen sixty-two as an endpoint. My understanding is that the historic consultant chose that because that was the last, when the last of the ranch houses was built, and there's really a significant number of ranch houses there. It's the most popular style in the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Daniel Braemer.
Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Dan Brothman, and I don't have a speech prepared. I'm just here to lend my support, and I'm probably the newest member of the community. Just moved in five months ago, just moved into Glendale, and it's just a really lovely area. And one thing I've noticed is you'll see all day, pretty much, and into the evening, you'll see people, families, you know, walking from Verdugo Park up Neodjara, and that area is really heavily populated with foot traffic, people walking dogs and strollers, and it's just something that, you know, is really, I think, a very special feature of that area adjacent to Verdugo Park. So I think we'd like to see it stay the way it is. Thank you.
For the housekeeping purposes, can you turn on the timer when the speaker comes up? Next, we have Ms. Myrna Stanley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Myrna Stanley, President of Verdugo Woodlands West Homeowners Association, and I'm just here to convey our homeowners and association's enthusiasm to see this project inching up closer and it's almost to the City Council to establish this overlay zone for Neodjara and Fernbrook and some of Hillside and Wabaso. Personally speaking, I'm so excited I can't stand it. You just, if you have not gone to Neodjara, and, because I walked this two or three times from my home north of this area, it puts you in a different frame of mind. It's so Sylvan, so heavily wooded. The stream will come back, God willing, with a couple more El Ninos. No sidewalks. I have to tell you, there's so, there's so much pedestrian traffic. There is a man in our neighborhood who has put a motor on a desk chair. He ties himself to the desk chair, and he has two little puppies, and they, that's how he goes up and down Neodjara. It just, and he's safe. It just, we just, it's amazing. It's just, parents walk their kids to school without any, you know, hesitation, walking in the middle of the street. Where else would you see a sycamore tree in the middle of the street, I ask you? It's just, I, I'm so excited about this, and I look forward to your approval of this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't know about that motor-driven chair. Is that ticketable? Okay, next, we have Francesca Smith.
Hi, thanks for having me. I'm only here to support this. I helped Kathy a very little bit in the very beginning, and I didn't really know her neighborhood, and you have probably visited now and seen how beautiful and extraordinary the natural environment, as well as the man-made part of the landscape, is really different from anyplace else I've ever been. I do this for a living. I'm a historic preservation consultant, I mean, employee of the state, and I grew up in a historic district that was established in the nineteen thirties in Alexandria, Virginia, and it hasn't inhibited growth or development or, and it's, it's only inhibited development, I think, in a positive way. It's a beautiful town. Lived in quite a few other historic districts, including Brockmont Park. Thank you very much for supporting that.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say this is a great effort.
Please state your name.
Francesca Smith, sorry.
Thank you. Next, and that is Kathleen Cornfield.
Hi.
Please state your name.
Kathleen Cornfield. I've lived there for twenty-five years. I've raised my daughter there. I work in Glendale. It's been a wonderful street. It's been a wonderful neighborhood and experience. We care about each other on that street. When you talk about contributors, my house, although very small, is one of the contributors. There is a monstrosity at the end of the block, second house from the end, which is all marble and reflecting and statues and whatnot in front of it, which is not at all within the character, and I would love to keep the character of that street. And as people mentioned, we actually help each other, and we pick up mail and garbage cans and have parties, and if you let people build up those monstrosities, those people never come out from behind their gate, ever. They don't say hello to anybody, and it would just change the character. My daughter's going off to college in the fall. I would like, when she comes home, that she actually recognizes where she was raised.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker card. If there are speakers want to come up to the podium, please fill out the card. If not, then if I don't see any more speakers, I'll close the public hearing. Any comments or any questions for the speakers?
Oh, no.
Okay, close the public hearing, discussion.
Well, many years ago, I was appointed a design review member by Larry Zarian, and I had Jim Glasser give me a tour of Glendale, and he insisted on taking me on Neodjara, which, well, just blew me away because it's just a really amazing place. I've walked with some of the walkers that walk around down the street, and it is a very special environment, and I wish the traffic engineers were here to understand that you could put a sycamore tree in the middle of the street and still have traffic. I really think it should be our next, you know, model that we use in our transportation design, because it does slow traffic down. It's just lovely. I'm thrilled to see this here. I just think it's one of our more beautiful neighborhoods, and I really do think it's very nicely done, well-done, and the landscape truly does contribute to the beauty of this neighborhood, and I'm glad it's part of the discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion.
How about it, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to move that the Planning Commission of the City of Glendale, after having reviewed and considered the materials of current record relative to the proposed Neodjara Drive Historical District Overlay Zone, do hereby recommend to the City Council that the overlay zone be adopted as proposed.
Second.
So we have motion and support. Walkover, please.
Planning Commissioners Landrigan?
Aye.
Manukian?
Aye.
Chairperson Lee?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Number three two zero, Neodjara Drive, we are recommending to the council to be the historic district. Okay. Item number eight, Community Development Department Updates.
At this time, we have no updates.
Okay, comments from Commissioners?
I have a, I have a comment. Today, we saw, Mr. Chairman, an example of good intentions that led to suboptimal outcomes, I think, on many levels. We have a state ordinance that calls essentially having our arm twisted into giving away valuable consideration in return for very little, and it calls it a concession. That's not a concession. That's not a bargain. That's having your arm twisted. And unfortunate, and that is the state. The farther somebody is from you, the worse they are. The closer they are, the nicer they are, and you like them even more, which is why I am chagrined that the discretion that could have been used with a sense of, a greater sense of conservatism was not. I understand that the density bonus is a matter for city personnel to give as much, I mean, beyond the minimum in their own discretion. In those circumstances, applicant is sitting across the table from you, and you're sitting there looking at the paperwork that applicant has given you, but at a certain point, you also have to be cognizant of the people who are not sitting in the room, the people that don't have an advocate there. This is not, I'm not advocating any sort of conflict here. I'm just saying, let's do a greater deal of balancing. Yes, we do have a shortage of affordable housing in the City of Glendale. Let's stipulate for the sake of this discussion that. And yes, the project that we approved today does take us, as Ms. Stotler told us, a good bit of distance towards our ultimate goal. I get that. But I'd rather go halfway and keep all of the stakeholders happy than go all the way, and ultimately, and let's face it, I am the commissioner of the people who live in the City of Glendale now, not those who come ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, right? So my main consideration is their welfare. Pure and simple. So I wonder if we cannot balance these interests a little bit more, be mindful of the person who is not in the room, and realize that that resident, that current resident, is entitled to a bit of advocacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment?
Well, I would like to add to that, and I mentioned earlier, I think, that we have some local control in an area that we should pursue, and I, I used to live in the City of Santa Monica where rent control was, and I will tell you, it's a bitter pill that the developers, that renter owners were forced to pay for everyone else to not develop, and it's, I think that we really need affordable housing. I consider it not just a great goal, but a noble goal, and I think an ethical goal. I think it's so important that we do this. However, the remedy, if you give somebody an overdose of aspirin, you can kill them, and I think that when you don't have certain constraints on the application of an unlimited cap, that you can get something that no longer conforms with the standards of living that I think planning is supposed to maintain. And so I really do encourage us to look at creating some standards that are within our local capacity that allow bonus densities, but without compromising the state of the existing neighborhood, as Commissioner Manukian said. And it wasn't our place to make any changes at this time, but I think that we can look to the future and see how we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to echo my fellow Commissioners. I'd like to echo my fellow commissioners, and I think I, you know, directed to the staff to look into this, so in the near future, you know, take a look at the possibility of reviewing, going back and reviewing this density bonuses and high bonuses, three bonuses that we're giving as to, I was really surprised to know that was unlimited, so, you know, that's for the future, in the future meeting, that, you know, if you can take a look at that and then report back to us. We appreciate that. I do have really good news here. I'd like to make this announcement on behalf of our Commissioner Landrigan, that she officially became California State Mining and Geology Board Member, and congratulations.
Thank you.
She was appointed a year ago, and I guess she finally got approved a couple days ago.
By the Senate.
By the Senate, so congratulations.
Thank you.
I have one more, you know, I guess it really doesn't dawn on you until you run into it. I know, you know, when the projects come before us, that we approve with certain conditions, and, you know, there's a lot of construction going on in Glendale. What is the allowable time for those dump trucks to haul off the dirt? What are the operation hours?
I believe seven to seven.
Seven to seven, so seven in the morning?
Except for on Sunday, no, no construction. That's the noise ordinance. They can work on Saturday.
Okay, so it does start from 7 o'clock in the morning?
But not a minute before.
Six days, six days a week.
Correct.
Okay.
Fabulous.
Because I am on the road taking my kid to school, and I'm sitting behind this, you know, huge line because there's a construction going on on Louise between Broadway and Wilson, and, you know, it's not that big street, but, you know, God, this is 7:30 in the morning, and why is there truck going in and out? So it is from seven to seven. Can we take a look at that, too?
Which zip code would you like us to look at? Just tell us which area you would like us to.
Well, I, no.
Spotzone it.
No, no, I think it's a time, really, I think we need to avoid the, you know, commute time, you know, in the morning, and the, also, you know, coming home. So, you know, I do not want to restrict their, you know, operating hours. I mean, you know, we need to, we need to get those things built, you know, right away, but to hold up morning traffic, you know, it seems a little inconvenient, but like I said, until you run into the traffic yourself, you never realize that we've been approving from seven to seven, so, just my little comment.
I have an interesting addition to that. And I don't know this answer, but when a construction permit is given, I know that we have certain traffic requirements, the CECL and mitigated NEGDEX require that, you know, there's dust control, et cetera. Is there a traffic plan for situations, as Commissioner Chang has said, so that there would be posted for the neighborhood that, you know, traffic would be diverted this way, so detours that would facilitate less of the kind of bottleneck? It might be something we look at. I don't know if it's required, but.
Yeah, they have requirement that they have to get a haul route approved, but whether that requires posting and notice of the neighbors, I'm not familiar with that. I don't believe it does. I believe they just has a control on the size of the trucks and when they operate and the length of time.
That's so they can repair the roads after they destroy it, but I'm thinking more in terms of community coordination.
Madam Commissioner, members of the Commission, not to expand this into a large discussion and to just supplement that earlier response, depending on the size of a project, there have been projects such as the Americana brand where community outreach was conducted in order to facilitate deliveries, delivery times, in taking into consideration traffic, AM and PM peaks and things of this nature. It just depends on what the traffic conditions are in that area where the development is to occur, and say, for example, a school or other types of heavy traffic demands that would suggest a coordinated effort and outreach and then cooperation and notification with the surrounding existing uses. So it has happened, it does happen, and sometimes is conditioned, depending on what those circumstances are, so just a brief, a brief response in that regard.
Thank you. I do think, though, when you have a cumulative of building environment, like you do on Central, when you have several buildings going up at the same time, that it might be a good consideration that if, that there's coordination of that, too, because that only increases. Thank you for allowing us to talk about this.
Would I have any more comments? I'll turn to the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.